Mayor, as council chair, I just, before we jump into commission and committee reports, I want to thank Natasha for helping us to get into the 20th century.
The 21st?
21st century. Which could be a good thing. Anyway, we are transitioning from paper to electronics. And that comes with a little learning curve. This is our second meeting with it. But I have, as the chairperson and an outgoing council member, I'd like to share something with my fellow council members that your email and one of your obligations that you agree to as you become a councilperson is that you are responsive to the city, to the constituents you serve. There's a lot of information that comes through on email. And I also know Natasha appreciates getting a response and not having last minute panic. Their world is pretty complicated on a city council day. So I'm just asking for all of the council members to try to look at your email on a daily basis. There are things from the governor, there's things from AIC. You do get emails that are important. And so if you will try to take time, open up your Chromebook, it'll give you practice with the Chromebook too, to be able to do these and be able to contact Natasha if she needs some help. So I'm just asking that as a, an experienced person who came in today in the chaos and tried to ask some questions. So I'm just asking on behalf of Natasha and the staff for us to be responsive to our emails on a daily basis if you would.
Question? How can you look at me the whole time?
Well, I was gonna look at Marky, but she's new and it's like...
Yeah, I was looking at you.
I was kinda thinking, you know, class, not that you and I met today or anything, but...
Yes.
Anyway, thank you, thank you, Mayor, for the opportunity to share that. I think it's just, it's a new world and work is altering it. Keep us.
Sounds good, thank you. Okay, are there any commission reports?
Yes. Now that I know the correct category. Library. Library had 2,575 books checked out, over 32,000, 3,200, excuse me, patrons walked through the doors, which was very exciting. And this last month, they added 285 new books into their circulation. So Timber is constantly adding new things. They're starting to run out of bookshelf space, which is great. Their meeting room is used 25, added 30 times in the last month. And they had a movie night with over 48 different participants. So they're very excited for all the things that they're doing there. They do have movie night coming up this month, Elemental for the Whole Family. It's a Disney movie, so you're welcome to come if you wanna bag some popcorn. They encourage you to join them. And they have their STEM art days that they're continuing on Fridays for children, and that continues to be successful. She does have a book talk this month on October 19th. It's the Let's Talk About It, where they send a university professor down to talk about a book once a month that they're gonna review. This one is called The Best We Could. It's a memoir from a survivor from the Vietnam War, and it's a BSU professor that's gonna come down. And so it's really neat for the patrons to be able to get a further in-depth look at what the book is talking about and the experiences there. It's a really rich opportunity, and that's for everyone to join. So that is October 19th at 6:30. Everything else is next month, so.
Thank you. Sounds good.
Mayor, I have an economic development report. We will be meeting on Thursday morning at 7:00 AM. We have got a potential Main Street coordinator that is interested. We will be reviewing that information on Thursday. But I also want the public to know that it is an open meeting, and we will be trying to encourage some additional members to the board. We've got some people that have served for quite a while and have indicated that they may need some time to pursue other things. So we encourage people to come. We also want to report that the lighting went on the sign on Highway 95, which is an economic development project. And the sign has gone up coming off of Highway 201 on the Oregon side. And the third one is in production, and we'll just wait to announce when it's ready to go up. But good things happening in economic development.
Any other commission reports? Any committee reports?
We didn't need...
All things that we have later.
Yeah, wastewater permit.
Fry Foods.
Fry Foods.
Okay. Could we have department reports?
Yes.
Okay, Mayor and City Council, this is your City of Weezer monthly reports. Right now, we have 48 full-time employees for part-time and two seasonal. The Weezer Police Department September 2023 report is they had 36 adult arrests, 32 were misdemeanor, four were felony, they had one juvenile arrest, one with one being a misdemeanor. There were 55 citations, 25 misdemeanors, 30 infraction, calls for service were 452, case reports were 49, four felony, 33 misdemeanor, four accident, and eight incident. Animal control and ordinance calls, animal control, dog complaints was 21, impounded dogs was eight, returned to owner was four, and adopted was one. Cat complaints were three, impounded one, returned to owner one. There was one wildlife complaint, three livestock, and zero citations issued. For ordinance calls, there were seven abandoned vehicles, nine weeds, three junk and debris, there were nine warnings, and four man inspections done. Weezer Electric Department, power consumption for August 2022 was $5,824,81,000. The August 2023 was $5,114,207 projects. They finished up changing overhead line to underground for the Treasure Valley Farms. There is still more work to do in Phase Two of this project. They installed a pole for electric service at the Laird property. They fixed over a dozen lights downtown, installed a new welcome sign as you enter from the Oregon side, changed out a 500 KVA transformer at Western Timber due to low voltage Wastewater treatment plant, September flow for 2022 was $35,380,000. September's flow for 2023 was $37,060,000. September's BODs for 2022 was $43,594. September's BOD for 2023 were $30,127. And last month, they hauled 89 tons of biosolids to Clay Peak, they claimed 6,000 feet of sewer line on the north side of town, and they took clarifiers down for monthly maintenance. Water Department, Water Department production, September 2022, 28.57 million gallons. September of 2023 was 28.57 million gallons. Prepared for, they prepared for asphalt patchbacks, continued annual valve exercising, repaired leaking water on water main on West Ninth, continued oversight reservoir on, reservoir number one rebuild. They rebuilt leaking water service on Pioneer Road and hauled sludge to transfer site. The Street Department prepped and ran 12 loads of asphalt on patchbacks, various potholes and cutouts, sprayed weeds, took down the flower baskets on State Street, and swept downtown. The Weezer Rec Department, youth tackle football is going great so far this season. Soccer, youth soccer is almost done. They are currently taking registrations for men's basketball, taking registration for youth basketball, and the swimming pool is winterized and covered for the winter. The Building Department had six building permits issued, one single-family, one industrial building, one re-roofed sheeting along with one sign, one commercial building alteration, one dwelling alteration and addition. There was nine consults and 18 inspections. Mayor and City Council, letters of September monthly reports for the City of Weezer.
Thank you, Natasha. Okay, you've all had a chance to look at the minutes for the last meeting and for the public hearings. Would there be a motion to approve the minutes?
Mayor, I motion that we approve our minutes for the September... 11th.
September 11th meeting, as well as the September 28th meeting, and there's our public hearing as well that was held on September 11th.
There were two public hearings.
Two public hearings, yes.
On September 11th.
September 11th.
Yes.
Yes.
Second. Okay, second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passed.
Mayor, for clarification, I think it's the September 28th. Okay.
Okay. Now that Larry's not here, I can spread my papers out. So moving on from there to the bills.
Mayor, the Finance Committee has met, and I would make a motion to have the bills presented to the Treasury so warrants can be drawn for payment.
One second. Okay. It's been moved in second. Do we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Hafer?
Yes.
Blackwell?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Chipman?
Yes.
Barbaris?
Yes.
Okay, moving on from there. We have no unfinished business, so we'll go right into new business. And the first item is approved resolution for the City Comprehensive Plan, but we're taking that off the table for tonight, so some corrections can be made to it, and also so that you all can have more time to look at it and digest it. And next month, we'll have a workshop prior to the City Council meeting to go over it, and so we understand what it means and how it can be used.
I approve that.
Why? That means a lot to me. Okay, next item is to approve Resolution Number 685, Idaho Jim Grant application and authorize the mayor to sign. And this is for getting...
Water expansion project.
Right, water expansion to Maverick and then over to what will be the RV Park. And does everybody understand what a Jim Grant is?
Nope.
Okay. The Department of Commerce offers these grants to help businesses, and it pays for public, it pays for public infrastructure so that the businesses can go in. Okay? And like I said, it's up to $50,000. This project will be much more, but at the same time, it will help. So, are there any questions?
So we apply for this grant?
Yes.
On behalf of this business that's wanting to go in? Is that correct?
Right, but it pays for infrastructure that goes in.
That advances us, right. So like our curb and gutter, things like that, or the installment of sewer lines and water lines?
Water lines in this case.
Okay.
Yeah, we'd not cover curb and gutter because that's the developer's responsibility.
Right, okay, okay.
Yep. So this paper water line.
Perfect.
And this resolution serves as our, kind of like a letter of support that Street is kind of working on our behalf, right?
Right.
So Mayor and Council, I'd make a motion that we approve Resolution, the application resolution for Idaho Jim Grant Number 685, and have the mayor sign it.
One second.
Okay, it's been moved in second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, motion, motion approved. And just a moment here. Okay, next on the agenda is Fry Foods 2024 Industrial Discharge Permit, and approving it and authorizing the mayor to sign.
This was a committee meeting that we had, so Mike, I don't want to steal your thunder. Do you want to speak to it? So we meet annually with Fry Foods to just review the permit to make sure that they are working with us in an amicable fashion, and they're meeting all of the requirements of the permit. I would like to share publicly that we have developed a really good working relationship with Fry Foods, and I want to thank our wastewater and our water department. They've just done a really good job of communicating. There are no changes to the document. We did have three of the organization leaders come to the meeting, and they really complimented our staff. So I want to make sure that the council knows that this has been an evolving relationship, and I think we're in a really good place. And so I'm excited that we get to approve it with no changes.
Is there a motion?
Well, I didn't make that motion. I'm just, I'm letting somebody else motion.
So is there a motion to approve?
Mayor, I would motion that we approve the Fry Foods 2024 Industrial Discharge Permit and authorize the mayor to sign.
Second.
It's been moved in second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passed. Okay, the next item on the agenda is the Employee Corrective Action Procedure Policy. And I take it you've all had a chance to read that? And are there any questions or comments in regards to that?
I do have a question.
Okay.
Yeah. And it's merely just clarification for myself. If you are in the document, it goes through and lists the type of actions that happen, and then the recommended corrective action that needs to take place. And in reading the extensive list, which is well done, congratulations, I am curious what the difference is between a few of them, because at the top, there's a major, then there's a serious, and then there's a minor, right? Between the major and the serious, and this is just an example, so I just need a little clarification.
Okay.
Under major, it lists, let me find it real quick. Not following use of city vehicle policies. And then under serious, right, so less major, it says something similar to the use of the vehicle.
That you're to report driver violations.
City vehicle use violation?
Yeah, city vehicle use violation. To me, that's redundant, and so I'm wondering, do we have it listed out somewhere what the difference is between a major versus a serious versus a minor?
I think kind of in each one of these, there's a severity of, you know, of what your violation in a city vehicle is. Like driving while you're on your cell phone could be a serious issue, but more, a major one might be...
Getting in an accident.
Getting in an accident, or...
Driving drunk.
Driving under the influence where you knowingly got in that vehicle, knowing you were doing something wrong, and then violating the code by causing an accident, something like that. So I questioned the same thing, and we did have discussion back and forth. And so we left them in both due to the fact that there could be a major violation or just a serious violation.
Okay, so it's a C-like type of policy.
Yeah.
Okay, all right. Because I looked at that more.
Yeah.
I'm seeing something similar in each of these categories.
Yep.
And I don't, I'm not recognizing what the severity difference is, the way it's worded, so, okay. All right, that was my other question.
Serious might be not using your turn signal.
I wish that was serious.
Yeah.
Give a ticket to my dad would be the first one.
Okay. Are there, are there any other questions?
No, I think the work on this is great. I need it, again, just like the other policies that we've passed in previous, I think it's great to look at these things. So, nice work.
Well, a lot of work has gone into it, particularly with Karen Joy, our consultant, Natasha, and then others in the office giving your input. Okay, is there a resolution then, or a motion to adopt this policy?
Mr. Mayor, I motion that we adopt the Employee Corrective Action Procedure Policy as presented.
I have a second motion.
Okay, it's been moved in second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, motion passed. Okay, the next item is to suspend the reading of Ordinance Number 1268 and read by title only. And this ordinance is one that is 21 pages long, and so you've all had a chance to read it yourselves. Okay? And so rather than read the whole thing, we're suggesting that we do it by, that we do it by title only at this point.
So can we have discussion before we...
Sure.
Okay. So Sterling, you were served on this committee. Could you maybe highlight why this transpired and what some of the major things that were addressed so that we can...
Absolutely.
Share.
As we've all seen in the last year, a number of businesses and organizations and subdivisions have been coming into the city. And one of the things that we found in our current code is that it would list references to landscaping design, or even, I can't think of the exact code off the top of my head, sorry. We started this seven months ago, so it's not in, not there. But our current code made reference to...
Local land use planning.
Yeah, the local land use planning, thank you. And we found that we didn't really have any documentation on what that document was at all. And so the mayor, with permission of council, created a committee, and then that committee is what I've been a part of. The committee is made up of significant individuals across the community that represent the historical society, our gardening society. We have representation of, one of our members is, was a city planner in a different city. And so we have a great breadth of knowledge within the group, and we've worked to find ways to create the guidance that we would want as a city. As our city continues to grow and expand, I think we would all agree that we want to know that things coming in are gonna look like they belong in Weezer, that it's gonna fit together, that it's not a modge-podge of random looks here and random looks there and whatnot. So that's what this document is. This document, after researching and looking at several other cities, I think we compared about seven or eight different cities, ranging from Emmett to Coeur d'Alene to Meridian to Plainfield in Utah to a number of other cities. We pulled together and found that our favorite one, and really kind of used it as our model to guide and provide guidance for those people coming into the town. This document provides us design documents and recommendations on what type of landscaping is appropriate within the city limits of Weezer, recommendations on colors to put on your building, what sort of landscaping we would look for when we're talking about the elevation design of different businesses, as well as what to do about trees on the property, like what's appropriate handling of trees and whatnot, and goes further in detail for each of those things. So that's why it's 22 pages long. There's also examples on what's okay and what's not okay, so that it's pretty clear to anyone who is coming into the city and wants to develop something. Is that clear enough?
Yeah, and then how will this be used?
Okay, it will go into our zoning ordinance.
Microphone.
It will go into our zoning ordinance for commercial properties. And then from there, it'll be enforced with our building inspections, and the landscaping will need to be done before the occupancy privatisation.
And Sterling, did your group, once you guys put this together, did this go to PNC? Was it reviewed legally?
Yeah, so we put it together first, sent it to mayor to review, and then we sent it to the lawyer who made adjustments for things that they thought would be better suited or adjusted to meet what was legally backupable. If that makes sense.
And then it went to PNC.
And then to PNC, made their, reviewed the document and went through it. So it's back at our desk finally.
Yep.
And it's been six months in the process. I'm very excited that it's finally here.
And this committee started off working for recommendations with Maverick and with the RV Park, but I asked them if they would continue that work and look at making ordinances such as this. I think they'll also be looking at lighting and signage.
Yeah, that's all in there as well, sorry.
All in here.
It's all in there, as well as awnings, things that would be okay for downtown businesses, yeah.
And I will add, the thing I liked the most, well, not the most, one of the benefits of this is that there's two, almost three pages of just terminology, so that everybody's speaking the same language, and if we don't have the understanding, you can go right to this and know, yes, this is what we're talking about. So, good job, nice...
This is the committee.
Nice committee work. It's a good document.
And I agree, and I really appreciate what the, what the committee has done. Okay.
It would be my recommendation to pass, not that you asked, but that would be my recommendation.
Is that a motion?
Well, first of all, we need to approve it by title only.
Mr. Mayor, I would motion that we, oh, yeah, wait, hold on, I'm trying to... I motion that...
That we...
We suspend the rules and, it's not on my teaching.
Re-Ordinance Number 1268 by title only.
1268 by title only.
Okay.
That's what I meant to say.
Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Okay. Ma'am, we were just bouncing back and forth.
I have to cut.
Okay. It's been moved in second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, motion passed. Okay, now then, we come to the Ordinance Number 1268 to add it to Chapter 19, or add Chapter 19 to Title 10 with zoning regulations and authorizations.
She has to read it.
Right. Well, I'm just saying that we're coming to that.
Oh, okay, I was gonna say, before we move on.
Are we ready?
Yes, we're ready.
Weezer City Ordinance Number 1268, an ordinance of the City of Weezer, Washington County, Idaho, amending Title 10, zoning regulations, Weezer City Code by adding a new Chapter 19, Title 10 regarding landscaping, providing for purpose definitions specifying requirements and minimum landscape design standards, setting for standards and requirements for irrigation, street buffering, parking lots, site triangles, stormwater integration, maintenance and alterations compliance standards, providing procedures and misdemeanor penalties for violations, repealing all ordinances, resolutions, and orders consistent with the ordinance, providing a severability, providing for codification, providing for publication by summary, and providing an effective date.
Mayor, I would make a motion that we, oh, I gotta, no. To adopt the ordinance and have it published in the newspaper. Had a blank moment there for a minute. Ordinance Number 1268 and have it published in the newspaper.
And authorized next.
And authorize the mayor to sign.
Okay.
I have a second motion.
It's been moved in second. Do we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Barbaris?
Yes.
Hafer?
Yes.
Blackwell?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Chipman?
Yes.
Okay, and thank you. And again, thanks.
I would pass that along.
And I just noticed that I skipped over Number 4, William Rezone of the Weezer River Road to, from Agricultural to C2.
I was so confused.
So, from what I understand, this is property that's out on Weezer River Road that is in the impact area, so it doesn't affect the city directly, but we're making, this would be a recommendation to the county planning and zoning and county commissioners to pass, or to make this zoning change.
Well, I think it's kind of in not the greatest ground in the world out there. Right. So what he's doing, what it is, trying to put Penzi... So what he's doing with it is trying to put, depends on security reasons, bits in, in stuff. So I don't have a problem with it because it's not, I don't think it's that good a ground right there.
Okay.
Yeah, even though it looks to all, I mean, it's still classified as prime agricultural, right? Wasn't that what the discussion was? It was, is still, how could that possibly be, uh, defined as prime agricultural land out there? There's, there's no access to irrigation, and I just thought that was quite interesting. But I certainly think this is a better use of the land than what's going on now.
I appreciate how complete the application is. Like, it's nice to get all the information so that we could read through and, and really digest what was being submitted. So, yeah, I, I think he keeps his other properties very clean and, and very organized. And so I, I don't see, I don't have any concerns about him adding another place and especially if Mr. Elliott is okay with it. Great, that's what you get to look at. Awesome.
Okay, any other questions or comments? Is there be a motion?
I would move that we, um, accept the rezone request for the Williams property from agricultural to C two.
Second.
Second? Okay, I was, I was expecting it to be over here.
We're awake over here, just don't.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? And last but not least on the, on the agenda?
I'd move to adjourn.
Second.
Second, all in favor? Ooh, can we have another one?
Isn't there ordinance twelve-sixty-eight, chapter nineteen?
We just, we, we did that.
That was me.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.